I don't find them good. Alright, it's seven o'clock. Let's bring ourselves to order. No, actually, people can hear me. Alright, we had a couple of signings required on the Lincolnshire that we had in here last time, so we've taken care of that and we've done with that. We've all had a communication from the village that one of the things that's on the agenda is not coming before us tonight. So the only thing that's on our is 23 Clover Drive. Mr. Brandon Whalen is seeking to widen the driveway at 23 Clover. Now, before we get to that, I'd like to see if anybody has any comments, questions, had the ability to read the meeting minutes from August 2nd.
I read them.
Alright. We have a motion then to approve them as written or make any changes to them?
I make a motion to approve as written.
Second.
Alright, we've got a motion on the table to approve them as written. We've got a motion to second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Very good. We've got the meeting minutes on for the last time. I have signed off on the variances. Tonight, we have an administrative matter. We took care of that. The scheduled matter is 23 Clover Drive. The owner is Brendan Whalen. The applicant's application to widen the driveway at 23 Clover. The applicant seeks relief from the current zoning regarding the width of driveways pursuant to the village code and the parking requirements at driveways at 173-175-3. Do we have that gentleman here? Why don't you tell us what it is you'd like to do and why we need some relief from the code as it is?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for listening to this for now, but my name is Brendan Whalen, and I'm looking to widen the driveway just due to the fact of having truck SUV, having a trailer. I'd like to park down our driveway instead of on the driveway on the side of my house, behind my house, or to basically just clean up that area. We clip the corner trying to pull out. It's muddy, it's washed out, it doesn't look appealing to me. I try to fix it, reseat it, add more dirt. It just keeps getting clipped, getting clipped. So it just makes sense. I'm getting a new driveway. There's three other people on my street getting a driveway as well. They're all using the same person, and we're all getting a deal doing that. I'd like to get that driveway done down to get that and just make it a two-lane driveway and clean it up. Clean and precise, that's all. It's pretty simple.
Okay. Questions for anybody here on the board?
Yes, I have some questions.
Sure. Okay.
So, I'm guessing, the original house had a single-car garage attached to the house?
I bought the house going on seven years ago.
Okay. Alright, so you all know historically?
So, from what I do understand is where the driveway is now, where the garage is now, that was an addition that was added on. I don't believe that the house had a garage when it was first built. Then that addition was on, and then that, I don't know why that driveway was designed that way, but the previous owners wanted it that way, so...
Just knowing a little bit about architecture in the old village, it would appear to me that the original house had a one-car garage, which is now your breezeway. And the garage was added to the left of what is now a breezeway. They didn't shift the driveway, they left the driveway off the street, which hit the original garage, and they just half the length of the driveway, they shifted it over and then you got the little loop into the driveway. And you want to fix that half of the driveway and make it basically a double-wide driveway for a single-car garage. I got it right?
Yeah, I don't know if that was a garage there, but I do know that it's a breezeway living room, not...
And I understand what he is saying. My observation of it was that there was no garage or breezeway, and I don't know. That's an observation, but that the garage was put on, I don't know, 12, 15 feet from the house and turned that into a breezeway. Being as old as I am, I've seen that done in the town where I grew up. But in straightening the driveway, you really don't want to straighten it, as I understand it, you would like to expand that driveway some 10 or 12 feet farther to, so east. To the east?
Alright, then that's the same way as Buffalo.
So ultimately, what I want, I don't want to go past my garage. I want to stay in line with what's there and have that asphalt run straight to the street. I don't want a third lane. I want it from where it is now on the right-hand side, if you look near my house, I want it on the right-hand side to stay the same and just have it go straight to the street from where it is connected to my garage, going straight to the street, that's all I want. That's all I'm looking for. I'm not looking for extra feet. So right now, the way Aaron told me was that I can have a second lane or a second driveway 12 foot wide by 36 foot off the house. That is how the law is written. And right now, it's 22 feet, 23 feet by 12, that second going into the driveway or going into the garage. If I were to just do, add the 36, add 12 foot to that driveway, I wouldn't need a variance. Add that 12 feet to get the 36 foot that I need, but I don't want that. I want to go further. So ultimately, I'm not asking for 12 by 28. I'm asking...
Try clicking off a couple, okay?
I'm just asking for the 12 by 20 that I technically have to get extra.
So someone told you that you could expand your driveway to a single-car garage, and it would go farther towards Syracuse or more towards Buffalo?
Syracuse.
I guess towards, yeah, towards Dunnings.
Towards Dunnings, so that'd be towards Syracuse. Alright.
Either, I don't know, towards Dunnings, yes, away from 250.
And someone told you that?
Someone told me that I could add a second lane, which I already have. I could make it deeper. 12 by 36 is how the law is written. I have a 12 by 22, extra lane from the house. I'm looking to just make that into two lanes. That's all I'm looking to do. I'm not looking to make it a third lane or go past my house, that's all I'm looking for.
My understanding was that your driveway couldn't expand from where the garage was?
Yeah.
And that you can go out to the side with an application and a variance?
Correct.
And if you go towards the breezeway in the middle, then you're no longer in front of a garage, so you can't do that?
I don't know how the driveway got the way it was. All I'm looking to do is straighten exactly what it is up by the house, I want it down to the street. That's all I'm looking to do. And I can draw you a picture if you need it.
So let me understand this. It wouldn't suffice to have a adjustment? The key contractor came in to build this and put that line at the end of the trees of the garage. You wouldn't accept the fact that you removed that, that you moved over to the left, over to the east, whatever the hell that is? You wouldn't get rid of the stuff that you had, you'd keep that?
Whatever two lane is, that's all I'm looking for. Two-lane driveway so that I can park my trailers and my cars. Exactly.
So you would use the right side of the state as the answer?
However, what's 24 feet wide? And that's all, 12 foot by 12 foot, and then from the garage to the breezeway, down the street.
So is the idea then to straighten out the driveway, come through straight out from the garage, out to the road?
Exactly. So widen where it is on the street, widen that to two lanes.
Double-wide at the curve?
Correct.
Would you take away the part that...
If, as long as it's 24 feet, I'll take that away. I have no problem with doing that. As long as it's two lanes, right? One lane is 12 foot by however long, and then the other lane will be another 12 foot by however long. That's all. 24 foot wide is what I understand to be the two-lane driveway.
So you said you plan to store your trailers on the driveway as well?
I have a 12, I have a six-and-a-half by 12 open trailer, yes. And I'd like to keep it on the driveway.
Well, I think there might be, if we had our staff here, I think that you have to maintain that behind the garage line. I'm not 100% sure.
Well, that's what I was driving at with the...
Right, like, your intention is to try to put your trailer on the driveway, but I think you got to make sure that the trailer doesn't...
The driveway doesn't go over in front of the breezeway.
Well, no, the trailer can't be in front of your garage at all times unless you're using it.
Well, I use it almost every day. And in the wintertime, I don't mind storing it behind or wherever I need to store it.
So, Michael, then the idea is expand the driveway from its existing, right now it comes out of the garage, bends, and then goes up?
He just wants to straighten out to have a two-lane driveway. So he's not making it any wider than it already is?
Where do you get the double, and forgive me here, but where do you get the double-car garage that warrants the two cars to the two-lane driveway?
Oh, because it's technically one lane for each garage.
There's only one garage?
Well, I get that. That's why he's basically here for the variance, because he needs to have one lane at the road where the driveway needs to be guttered, should just basically go right into the garage.
Okay.
And we've allowed, as in the past, where we've allowed, I have a turnaround, so if I had a one-car garage, I might have a turnaround that I can back, carry out of the garage, into the turnaround, and then pull out of the driveway. But it's just the fact of he's requesting this variance to extend what he's got now to make it a two-lane driveway.
The width of two lanes.
Right, but he only has one car garage.
But to get two widths, you need a...
Two-car garage.
Well, you need a two-car garage. Or you need a variance from this group that allows you to park, and quite frankly, we've had folks with two-car garages come up to us to put in a third one.
Well, right, so again, the village was built back when there was probably a one-car family, and now we have multiple cars and stuff like that.
Right, we should be addressing how it is now.
Right.
You and I have 14, 2014, this is 2020.
Oh, God bless him, look at that. Okay, driveway. On residential properties, a gravel or paved area from the street to the garage or to an area on which a conforming garage could be built, no more than 12 feet wide on properties where there is no garage, or 12 feet wide for each garage stall, up to a total of 36 feet. That's three 32s, but a residence's single-stall garage may have an additional apron of 12 feet by 36 feet to facilitate two-car parking.
I don't have 36, I have 22 of the areas.
24. So if someone told you that you could have that, because that's what it says?
Right. And I was looking to just extend it all the way out.
The area conforming garage could be built of no more than 12 feet wide on properties where there is no garage, or 12 feet wide for each garage stall, up to a total of 36 feet. So that'd be a three-car garage, in my mind. A residence with a single-stall garage may have an additional apron of 12 feet by 36 feet, I think that means length, to facilitate two-car parking.
Exactly. There we go.
So in essence, that's what he has in the breezeway, up by the breezeway in the garage, but he doesn't have it down by the apron because he's got a strangely shaped driveway.
Again, it says, "A gravelled or paved area from the street to the garage or an area on which the conforming garage could be built, no more than 12 feet wide on properties." The only area where additional things could be built would be on that side.
Yeah, when you get in the property lines.
And then you've got a huge, right.
There's a lot, if you go on that street, there's a lot of these additional things that have been graviled in, you know? Do it and ask forgiveness after. But they're really doing it to facilitate not having a mud hole where the parking is. What I'm saying with the situation is, can you go off that line, get your footage in, and then anything that you already have now on the west side, you grassle, but still facilitate what you want to do?
As long as I get a 24 by two-lane, I don't care if it, because I know what you're talking about. There's a little swell that comes off where the walkway, the breezeway is, and it swells out.
Yeah, and your concrete sidewalk stops there.
Yep. I'm fine with it going straight with the concrete drive, or the concrete walk, and then my driveway going out. I'm fine with that as long as it's the 24 foot, however it is to be. As long as it's a two-lane driveway, that's all.
Okay, but in general, what I'm, the point I'm trying to make here is, you don't build driveways in front of a breezeway. Breezeway is in a living area, you don't build a driveway in front of that.
And that's the problem with that, because you don't want people making driveways in front of their house.
Right.
Paid, paid, I mean...
Or driveway on the front steps.
Yes, but a drive, a garage bay that's converted into a breezeway that already has a driveway up to what was a garage is still there.
It's no longer a garage.
Correct, but the asphalt is still there, because the garage used to be there. Yeah, is a grandfather's. Yeah. So, I mean, in this circumstance, you couldn't, you, not you, someone, when they built the garage, should have made the driveway straight through from the street to the garage, shifted it over the way it is, and asphalt in front of the breezeway should have removed.
I think the reason they didn't is the tree.
Yeah, the oak tree.
There is, there's a large tree out by the road.
Locust tree.
It would be in the way.
I'm not going to touch that one. Oh, it's the village's street, I can't touch it. It's too close to the street from what I was told.
Maybe, maybe.
So I won't, I won't touch the tree.
And you're just...
I'm sorry, it's your house, go ahead.
So what are we trying to do here in bed? Put me at your house, not in front of the breezeway, because I don't think that's, I don't think that's garage right now. But if you put me in front of your garage, tell me what it is we're trying to do, and recognizing that we've got a driveway that goes over in front of the breezeway right now.
How can I say this differently?
Any way you want. We're pretty easy here.
Ultimately, that's, I want to keep the driveway that's there and just add that 12 by 30 section that is currently grass, that would not make it a pea-shaped driveway, would make it a rectangle-shaped driveway. Or a nine, it looks like a nine. It's two lane and then it swells out to the one, whatever digit you want to talk about or what it looks like, but I want it to be a rectangle. What I currently have to add, that long grass path, close to the tree.
See, what we've done with some folks who've come here, and most times, it's somebody with a two-car garage who's looking to add a third lane, usually to park a trailer or something, or a boat for the winter, or whatever. Couple of times, they've requested us to take it all the way up to the road, and we've said no. What we've said is it will come within 12 feet of the road, then it will take an angle into the regular driveway, that'll give you those three, yes, take that back. That's what we've done a couple of times. Mike, it sounded like you wanted to say something?
No, no, I think I got what he's wanting, so...
You want a, you want a double-wide driveway for a, straight to the house. Carry it in the story. That's the request. So the final product's going to be 30 feet long, 12 feet wide, measuring the 12 feet from the edge of the garage westward to the front of the house?
I believe the total length of the driveway that's there now is 64 feet. I'm looking for the add-on pavement part of the driveway is, I believe, 12 by 30. Right now, it's 12 by 30, that is the grass area.
So ultimately, you're looking for a 24 by 60?
For a drive.
Driveway?
Yep.
Does that mean that you will address the existing portion that comes over in front of the house?
I don't know. I mean, if I were, if you're asking me to move it to have a lane just at the garage and then a second lane outside of that, I believe I would be in my neighbor's property. I think I'm eight foot from my neighbor's property, so I can't do that.
Okay.
So I'd like to keep it, there it is, currently.
So what does this do to this committee if this comes, because this will come in again? This will come in again. What are we going to do with expanding the edge of the driveway to in front of the house? The fact that it's already there, that I don't have to deal with.
It's widening at the curb. Widen it, widen it, widen it at the sidewalk gutter, call it whatever you will, concrete piece.
The street.
The street. That's the place where it shouldn't be expanded.
Well, maybe we need to take a look at the code, because we have multiple cars nowadays rather than one car. I mean, like I said, back in the 50s, people only had one car, so it was easy to live by a one-lane driveway and one car garage. Now we're in the 20, 23 almost, and people have two cars, even three cars.
Two, four, five, six.
So to me, this is probably something we need to look at, because again, maybe we need to bring it into the modern times. I mean, I don't know, I'm just putting my two cents out there.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I mean, you're looking at a conforming situation with that breezeway. So he's just trying to accommodate what he's got.
Right, it's not like he can add another garage, because then he's got to get a zero setback for the second bag.
So are we trying to come over in front of the breezeway?
I'm not doing, I'm leaving the driveway as it is now.
Okay.
I'm not going any further in towards the house.
Well, you need a way to walk into the breezeway, you know what I mean? I don't think we can make them pull the asphalt out and say, hey, you got to put brick paper and...
But it doesn't go all the way up to the house.
No, it does not currently go.
Yeah, it comes in and goes like that.
From the one, from the garage, it swells over to the walkway, and then once it hits the walkway, then it swells out again.
So that's his configuration right now?
And it's wide as always?
Yep.
And it's wide as always now, I believe, is the sort of one?
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm not looking to go any further in towards the house. I just want to take a look at that, straight.
No, it's this area here. Looks like grass.
No, if I have to, whatever, yeah, if I have to, then yes. Whatever's left over, I'm sure when we dig it up, it'll be, yes, it'll be seeded.
Maybe I don't understand it, sorry.
No, currently, it shouldn't be shifted at all. It'll make it just about the same width as it is now. the same width as it is now.
Okay.
If I, I, I believe that.
So where in your house is it? Where in your house? I mean, I saw your house, but I, I can't figure it out from a bird's eye, sorry.
But the tree.
It's awesome.
It is, it is.
Okay.
Okay.
And I, I believe there's, I believe there is, should have been another drop. Because I gave them.
This is, unless you want to.
There was, um. Oh, I, it's not, I know, it's, yeah, I think, um, I thought, I gave it to, I thought it was.
But your own guy now?
No, it was the, um, it was the set survey who was, who purchased the home. So it had the driveway, you know, I, I handed out my highlight that I, I don't know where, where, I'm gonna get the, the woman at the, at the office, I don't know where that went to. But that, I tried to present that as well.
All right.
You look like you had something to say.
First, first of all, I'd like clarification, because sitting back here, I only have a diagram, but I'm not gonna. So basically, what you wanna do is, it's.
Just this, I do not want to do that.
Okay, all right. So, just so, I understand what everybody else understands. We're talking, here's the breeze, current breezeway, basically what you want to do is just that.
Yes.
Not that.
Not that, just this.
Right.
Oh, this is correct?
No, you just wanna leave that, just do.
That was the point that I said, comes around like that.
I assumed it would, I don't want it to.
Wait, you're not going to work by the sidewalk?
And so that addition of the road, that addition of the road come through the existing tree?
It will not, no.
No kidding? I believe you, I take your word for it.
One other thing I heard, I mentioned, if you hear those two, this is.
That's gonna stay there.
And that is, some of the houses were built with a breezeway, with the.
That's not, yes, it's right, laid to grass.
It's, it's, there's a little grass.
So they put a driveway?
Concrete path.
Yeah, yeah, and you're gonna leave that just where it is, what it is.
Put a future garage?
No, they just put a driveway in where, up to where the curb line is, you know, it's almost, and I'm, you're going on a 60-year-old, you're.
Right.
Obviously, they're trying to replant grass on the corner of the driveway, just to.
Did that, that make it sense to you? What, where?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, and further, you're wearing my neighbor's address.
It is, and what, what my concern about is if everyone else in the village comes to us and says, do that. What we've got in front of us seems reasonable.
Right.
Help me, help me get a straight driveway coming out of my garage, going out to the road, not having to take down that tree, and not tearing up the existing driveway that's there, and oh, by the way, that doesn't go up to the breezeway, that stops short of the breezeway, just with the, with the sidewalk and the other stuff that's there. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Could I add?
Go ahead.
Some more, I'll make sure I'm on camera.
And while he's coming over there, just the last question I've got, that out of the road, is that taking it to the edge of the house or the garage that's existing there?
It will not go past my garage, it'll stay.
That's, that's the only thing you needed to say?
Yep. Uh, my personal opinion is where the driveway meets the road now should be removed and added to a straight driveway coming out for the garage. A parking pad big enough for a trailer may be available next to the garage, between there and the neighbor's lot line. You said you got at least eight, eight.
Family of the.
Yeah, a parking pad for a trailer would be next to, this has been done in another spot that I know of, and allowed by a much, much, much older, long since gone building inspector. Not the last one, but the one before that allowed this up on Champion Avenue, a parking pad next to the garage to park the trailer, unless you lose vehicle.
He could have.
And with a sliver 45 belt to main driveway, it's still leaving this main driveway coming out.
Question, where's the trailer gonna be here, the boat, or whatever you've got that you're gonna park in the new section? About where?
I would, I could park it either, on either side. I don't, I haven't talked to my wife on which way, which side she would want if we were to go, but just to park it on, on the driveway, and then what, in the winter time, I have a place I can go and store that. So I store it, and it's not on grass, it's not on my yard, it's, it's somewhere else. But I use it during the spring, winter, or spring, summer, and fall.
Other thoughts or questions from people on the board? Thank you, by the way.
Sure, thank you.
I know what's that.
So, the idea that you're thinking of is to expand the road portion by 12 feet, so it comes over to the outside wall of the garage, the outside wall towards Syracuse, or whatever we wanna call that. And that'd be about 12, but that's about 12 feet?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not talking about 36 feet, we're not talking about putting on 24, we're not talking about doing anything. We, we are talking about a driveway at the end of it, that's gonna be bigger than the garage, but it doesn't exist, doesn't, doesn't do anything with what's there now.
Right.
Okay.
And ultimately, is 24 by 64 rectangle of a driveway?
Yes.
And that's. With a funky size.
That's what it's gonna end up being.
Where the, where, where the sidewalk is.
Yep.
Right. Okay, um, thank you very much. We'll close this to any public comments, any comments, questions by members of the board?
No.
Or thoughts?
No, I'm content with the way you phrased it.
Okay.
This time.
This time, yes, it took me a while to get there. All right. Then what we're looking for then, um, first of all, is this a seeker?
Type 2.
Is it a type 2?
Yes.
All right, so we have a seeker type 2. You have an emotion for that?
I make a motion for type 2 action on the seeker, with no environmental impact.
Second?
Seconded, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? None. Just for your information, that says what kind of an investigation. That some of the larger ones, we have to do more investigations, or there's investigations in the property, it's not, not required in this case. All right, so we've taken care of that. Now, the second thing on is we've got to address. Okay, agreed. Okay, so the five steps that come out here, axes to be considered, are whether the undesirable change would be produced in character of neighborhood or detriment to nearby property.
Yeah, there's other driveways that are, have 24 foot wide driveways.
At the end of the day, no one's gonna notice this.
Okay, so is that where we all are, is no, no one's gonna, okay. Would the benefits sought by the applicant, well, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance? Yeah, I don't know how it's gonna happen, so that's a no. Number three, whether the requested variance is substantial.
I would say no. It's basically less than half of the driveway, you know, width or length of the driveway.
You don't think?
I've already got three quarters of it, I'm saying another quarter. So I'd say no.
The, the, the addition itself is not substantial, agreed. Okay.
It's literally less than 25%.
Agreed. Would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood?
No.
No. I agree with that. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. I think that all existed when you got there, was I correct?
No.
Oh, no, so that would be no. All right, so we have, we have no's on all of those. Do we have any special conditions that exist for this? Adverse to be minimized? Anything we wanna consider here? I don't think it is, okay. So now what we're looking for is a motion to approve or deny. Hold on a second, we've got one question, yes, sir?
Can I, a couple of questions. How close is this going to be to the tree would be in damage to the village tree by disturbing roots? And have the neighbors signed off on this?
Yes. All my neighbors have been notified of this.
Okay, it didn't come out, that's why.
Yeah, sorry, no, they, I sent it to everybody that was supposed to be sent.
Is there any damage to the tree that?
It'll be three foot away from the base of the tree, I believe, and yes, there will be roots that were, that are taken out, but I don't think the tree will be damaged. But I'm not, I'm, uh, I'm, maybe I was for a living, I don't know, but from what, from what the, the company that's coming in the cave would say, yes, we can go through that tree. If anything, the roots of the tree could eventually come up, but it's like, if you want, you're not gonna kill the tree, so that's what I was.
And at that point, then your position would be, you would come to the village, have a discussion with the village about whether or not to keep that tree in that location, or not?
If that needs to be discussed, we need to discuss that too.
Okay. Has any of your neighbors had any problems with your proposal?
I have not, I've spoken personally to almost every single one of them, I, I have not heard any intent.
No, it's.
And like I said, three other neighbors arguing their driveways, stopping with the same guy, so.
Oh, so we're going for the package deal, huh?
Trying to move, yeah.
All right, so then we're, other questions?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, any other thoughts or, or questions, then what we need is either a motion to deny, or a motion to approve it, um, as a 12-foot, or as something that, and I don't know, think about how you wanna say it, but you don't want it to go any farther, what is that, east?
East, yes.
Any farther east than the, the external edge of the garage? I mean, that, that's my point here.
Yes. I will make a motion.
Okay.
For a acceptance.
Or what, what, what's the, you just said the right word.
Approval.
Approval, I make a motion for approval of a asphalt driveway addition to be an addition of 12 feet wide at the curb line, and running, perp and running, I don't know, parallel to the edge of the existing garage bay, which is basically the end of your structure.
Correct. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve 12 feet coming out to the road, not going any farther east than the edge, than, than the property edge of the, of the garage itself.
Yes.
Second.
We have a second on the table, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None. We have a motion passed, and we have the, the seeker done for that. We should be all set. Good luck. Thank you for, for putting us through this.
Thanks for, for hearing, I appreciate it.
All right, you guys have a great one, thank you.
Good luck. Brendan, any relation to Pete Wobehan?
Yep, he's my uncle.
He's your uncle?
Yep.
Okay.
Is that a good thing or a bad thing?
I know, he, he worked for my company and he just retired, and I'll be back.
Oh, so, okay, yeah, he's doing some hard time stuff without, yeah, for sure.
All right, very good.
Thanks.
Take care.
Okay, the motion to adjourn?
Well, hold on, before, before we do that, education.
I did mine already.
September 26th, 8th, 28th. Is this free line, chance?
No.
All right.
So if you'd like to register, let me know. Um, the village will cover the payment. It's a one-day commitment, at less than a full day.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's a fair portion, I mean, it's gonna be four or five hours of the eight that you gotta get.
Yeah.
And then, plus you gotta get 10 and 8, probably 9, 12.
I think you only need four hours.
8:30 if you want breakfast.
Does this cover?
Yep.
We only need four hours for a year?
Four, yep, for a year.
Oh, man. Okay, um, so we've got that on the door. If you have any questions or comments on that, see Joe, um.
One question. Is this down Yomart?
No.
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 Yeah.
No.
Okay, the thing that I had on my, my agenda here was, there's enough question in this particular code. Should we seclude 10 or 15 minutes at our next meeting to send something to the board and say, you should think about this, because you are all set up to give more than one of these coming your way?
Yes, yes.
All right, so we're gonna put 15 minutes on the next one to discuss, um. I'm just trying to think how we wanna put the, discuss the, the applications to widen driveways and how they exist. Nice, I like that a lot. That's gonna be 15 minutes, that doesn't give us a special meeting, it's worth doing. All right, anyone got anything else? Do we have anything on our agenda for September?
Nothing I've heard, yeah.
Nothing on our agenda for, for September?
Maybe October.
Question, um, yes, all right, so then let's just, at that point, we can, we can have an adjournment?
Okay, um, should we also dedicate a few minutes to thinking about maximizing or changing the garage size and/or lot coverage limit?
Absolutely. Put that, just put that in the meeting minutes, and maybe it's 20 minutes now, but yes. Fair enough.
And we need the same type of discussion for those deserts and what we went through last meeting.
Well, I think that's 20 minutes.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm at the chair.
Okay.
Chair.
So that we're not at 132 or 1% till we're going to 196?
So he's saying president.
192.
Maximal 192, or a lot of these problems go away if we change the 1% to 1.5%.
2,000.
Based on the average, well, it really depends on the block size, but.
Okay.
On average, I mean, 1.5% solves almost every problem.
Fair enough.
2% certainly solves the problem. So, or we should just say 2%, or 192 square feet or less or higher. Who, done you?
I believe the village board already has their code on the radar.
The ones that don't?
But I don't, for the shed size and lot coverage. I wanna say, I think they're considering the setback, possibly changing the setback.
You mean the setback as being not 5 feet, or not 10 feet?
Not 10 feet, possibly 5. But I'm not sure that they're addressing any change in size, so.
Well.
I can go check.
Okay.
And if you change setbacks, oh, then you definitely wanna think about changing the size of it. Because if you push that, if you push your, disrupt your deeper. Because if you push that, if you push your structure deeper into the corner, you get a bigger, bigger building. But then things can get out of hand.
All right, motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn at 7:50.
We have a motion on the table?
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, nothing on our table for September rethor, so.